Board hearing. First of all, I'd like to address any business that the board may want to consider tonight, comments. Any board member want to add anything? Hearing none, we'll go right to the first application. And that application is the Star Rental Company. This is on a continuance. Where's this in here? Let me see that. That's the wrong one there.
Yeah, just take it.
That was a copy of the last one, right. This is on the continued application of Deborah Atitius, DBA Star Car Rental, 206 Main Street, Milford, Mass. for a special permit to Section 2.3 of the zoning bylaws in relation to a parcel of land located on the southerly side of East Main Street, known and numbered as 231 East Main Street. The special permit is sought in order to move the applicant's car rental business into a 2,157 square foot space previously occupied by Sutter's Glass. Concerning the applicant, currently, the business is being moved, and the dealer hens across the street. Concerning the question, explain the reason that you assert a special permit is in harmony with the general purpose in the intent of zoning bylaw. The applicant states, because it's just a transfer of an address for my business apparently in the same loca-- within the same location. Concerning the question was the proposed use of the premises will not create undue traffic or congestion in apparent pedestrian safety. The applicant states, my business is very quiet, not so much traffic, one to three people per day. Concerning the question was the proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. It's a small car rental business just being moved across the street. With that, the planning board reviewed the petition above at its regularly scheduled meeting of July 16th, and recommends three in favor, two opposed. See town planning letter. The planning board applicant requests a special permit to establish a car rental business on the subject property. A car rental business will be located in 2,150 square feet, previously occupied by Sutter's Glass. The plans submitted with the application are sufficient for general determinating the use questions under the special permit application. However, they are not detailed enough to verify off-street parking requirements for the overall property in context of the planning board's site plan review. In addition, a Class II license will also be requested from the selectmen to facilitate the owner's occasional purchase of vehicles to lease, although there will be no site, onsite auto sales of any kind. Therefore, I recommend a favorable report to the zoning board of appeals for the use authorization only. The actual number and placement of the rental vehicles will be determined by the planning board at a formal site plan review, and as to the Class II license, there will be no vehicles offered for sale on the property. With that, Attorney Fernandez, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and for the record, my name is John Fernandez. I have a law office here at 12 Main Street in Milford. I'm here with Debbie Atitius, who is the principal of Star Car Rental Incorporated, which is the corporate entity that operates this family-owned, small rental business, car rental business. I have a plan that I'd like to distribute, Mr. Chairman, with your permission.
Please do, that'd be great.
It's two pieces of the plan. One is the floor plan of the existing building, and the second is a site plan, which was not available at the time of the meeting. I did not attend the planning board meeting, and neither did the applicant. This was not an application that I had originally filed, but was asked to come in because I represented the Atitius family previously and historically, but they had moved forward with this on their own. So a site plan wasn't available at the time of a planning board review of this for zoning board purposes, which wasn't particularly necessary, as, as you know, if this petition is granted, they will still have to go back because the special permit for cars, car rental, is subject to site plan review. So there will be, within the next couple of weeks, a hearing before the planning board if you're inclined to approve this tonight. So the petition is really very straightforward, and to your reading of the petition and the report of the planner, it is exactly as it is stated. This small business, which has been operating out of a plaza at 206 East Main Street, so as you're heading out of town before you get to the old docks location, on the left-hand side, there's a plaza called Methaniels. Inside of that plaza, which is most, which is almost completely, other than Star Car Rental, retail, and restaurant location, this has operated since 2007. So for the past seven years, they've operated this small, family-owned rental business from that location. There was a tenant who wanted to come into that plaza, consistent in use, in terms of retail, restaurant-type of location, and so the decision was made by the Atitius family to seek to relocate the Star Car Rental business across the street to 231 East Main Street, which is the Acapulco Plaza. It's actually a better location for a lot of different reasons for this business, in that there are fewer tenants in there, there's plenty of parking, there's 81 spaces available in that location. There are only four ground-floor tenants. There's Acapulco's, there's a gym, and there's another auto business down there right now, Tech Pro, which is an auto service business. And this, the rental, would be located right next to that. So the floor space on the first floor would be divided between the restaurant, the gym, and then the two auto uses to the right-hand side, and then there's three offices upstairs. And the good thing is that there's a, an offset of timing of the use of the parking in that plaza, in that during the day, Acapulco's is not particularly active, and all of the other ones are in business, and then by 6:00, everybody else, including this business, would be closed, and Acapulco's would have pretty much the place to its own use. So this is a very low-impact use. They only need six of the spaces of the 81 for the small car business. There's only one employee, Mrs. Atitius herself, or one of her sons, is in the operation during the course of a 55-to-60-hour week that they operate, and so what we're asking for is your consideration to simply issue the required special permit under 2.3 for them to move this operation across the street.
Thank you. Questions, Mark?
No.
John?
No.
Mary?
None.
Joe? Brian?
What are the six spaces?
They're not designated on here. The planning board had indicated, you know, Larry Duncan said, once the plan was done, the planning board would look at it and say, is there a need to designate spaces? There really shouldn't be a need to designate spaces because the parking's available throughout the parking lot. So it's not as though we think, we don't think they really should be dedicated to begin with, but we'll decide that at the planning board level.
Do you have six cars potentially for, available for rent any time?
That's correct. That would be parked there, that's correct. But whether they're spread around, or whether, the obvious intent would be to collect them as close to the building as possible, but at the same time, you know, if the cars are static, and they're going to be for the entire day, sometimes it's better to kind of shift them out into the outer area and leave that parking for customers. So that would be the kind of decision they would make on a day-to-day basis.
The only question I have is, it's really, you're just looking for that transfer of six cars for rental purposes only?
Yeah, it's, it's, the allowance would be for the parking of six cars, not the rental of six cars, but the parking of six cars.
Parking of six cars?
Yeah. Because there may actually be a larger fleet that's out on the road, but only six that would be at the, no more than six that would be at the site.
But they're for rental, not for sale?
That's correct. There's no cars for sale. They're, the Class II license, which issues from the Board of Selectmen, would issue solely so that they could go to the auction and purchase cars for rental.
I have one.
Yes. Right, that would, that will still be transferred to the new location by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. You have the last word before we close the hearing, take another advisement.
What they told me in law school, if you thinks everything's okay, stop.
Stop. Thank you, Attorney Fernandez. We're closing the hearing.
Thank you.
Have a good night. We'll give our decision at the end of the night. Thank you. Okay. The next, which, who do we have up?
The next one is.
This is a.
Bay State Relief.
Bay State Relief. All right, Mary, you'll take over.
An extra package. You didn't get a pack.
Oh.
Here.
An extra packet.
For Mark?
Oh. Yes.
Okay. Okay, so you'll announce the board members on this?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Later.
Thank you.
It being 7:10, we're going to hear the next applicant. It's on the application of Bay State Relief, Inc., of 435 Worcester Road, Framingham, Mass. for variance from certain separation requirements for a medical marijuana treatment center pursuant to Section 2.3 of the bylaw, and in particular, footnote 23, in relation to a 4.553-acre moril parcel of land located on Commercial Way in Milford, known and numbered as 13 Commercial Way. The variance is sought to permit the establishment of a medical marijuana treatment center in a facility closer to a residential zone than is otherwise permitted. On the application, what is the section of the zoning bylaw do you ask to be varied? 2.3, footnote 23, see attachment. Question three, state the registry of deeds, book and page number, or the land court certificate number for the title of the present owner. List of registry of deeds, land court registry of deeds, number 14613. Question seven, state the proposed use of the premises. The medical marijuana treatment center, known as MMTC, and/or marijuana cultivation facility. Question 12, what section of the zoning bylaw do you ask to be varied? Section 2.3, medical marijuana treatment center, footnote 23, no medical marijuana treatment center shall be located within 200 feet of a residential zone, residential zone dwelling unit. Question 14, if the variance were not granted, what hardship would be caused by the circumstances described in 13 above? If the variance were not granted, the subject property would be precluded from use as an MMTC solely due to its incidental proximity to a residential zone, where such proximity is easily remediated by fencing, and where the door-to-door driving distance to the nearest residential zone is nearly a full mile. This would create a hardship for our company because properties so well-suited for this use are extremely rare. A hardship would be created for the people of Milford because it would deny them access to a use that was clearly contemplated by the bylaw, and it would do so in contradiction to the spirit and intent of the 200-foot setback rule. Question 15, state why you feel the grant of this variance will not cause substantial detriment to the public good. A variance in this instance will effectuate the intent of Section 2.3, footnote 23, of the bylaw by situating an MMTC in an appropriate zone. The incidental proximity to a residential zone will be remediated by secure fencing, and the use of the property is entirely internal to the building. Therefore, the public good will not be affected by the issuance of a variance. Wait a minute, wrong file. I'm looking for the planning board. Oh, you're right, there isn't one with this one. I'm sorry, there isn't one with this one. You're right, it's on the other one. Okay, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the record. Joseph Antonakis, on behalf of the applicant for the variance, Mr. Pettenari, Attorney Pettenari is here with me. He represents the owner of the real estate. And Madam Chair, I think the board is very familiar with the new bylaw relative to the cultivation and distribution of medical marijuana within the town of Milford. The bylaw, being recently adopted, contained the 200-foot provision relative to the residential zone, and I know that we don't like to use overly qualify the word "unique," but this is a really unique situation, because this particular building was, is almost as though someone designed a building for cultivation. This building that we are presenting to the board tonight is already equipped with solar panels, is situated on an industrial road that is a secondary road to another industrial road, which is a secondary road to a third industrial road. So you have to go down Bird Street, which is industrial, up Industrial Way, which is industrial, and then on to the final road, which is obviously also industrial. This building, which I've shown here, (blows whistle) want me to bring this up? Is obviously situated on the property. You can see I have highlighted for tonight's meeting the extent of the industrial zone in green. You can see that it is, our entire property here on Commercial Way is zoned industrial, highly industrial B. There is a parcel of residential zoned land here, and then there is a parcel of residential zoned land across Beaver Street. Again, this portion of Beaver Street back to Maple Street is all zoned highway industrial. It's this portion that fishes its way back towards Central Street, which is the only remaining residential zone left in that particular area. So I'm presuming that the good sense of planning came is because you had existing residences here, were to leave those residences as conforming, and then set the rest of the industrial land aside in here. So again, I've tried to just outline that. This parcel next to us is also completely industrial zoned, and, and this piece, again, situated just so close to the residential that it brings this particular bylaw into play. Again, we, as we've outlined in the application, we believe there is a hardship related to this because this parcel is unique in that, you know, this entire highway industrial zone, it's one of the few parcels that is located in and within or close to a residential area. And additionally, taking this building out of play for this particular use is of a significant hardship, because again, as I said, it's almost as though the building had been pre-designed for cultivation, which is what we'd like to do here, as well as dispensing under the, under the town bylaw. And in particular, we think that it's more significant that the actual drive distance from this parcel of property to either of these residences is eight tenths of a mile. So we have, in fact, almost the perfect situation, because while the activity that's going on, which is wholly enclosed within a building, may be close to the residential zone, the actual access to this property is eight tenths of a mile away. So just to give you an example, let's just assume that this parcel had frontage on Beaver Street, okay, and was accessible. I do not believe that this board would entertain a realistic argument for a variance, because in that circumstances, where the activity was going coincidental to residences, then one could say that was the purpose of the bylaw. But in this particular set of circumstances, we have a situation where we are, where the only access to this property, there is no access along Beaver Street, and that can be a stipulation to any of the permits. The only access is eight tenths of a mile away, completely out of the vision of all the residential area. There are no advertisements or outside types of structures or apparatus that would any way indicate the use that goes on in that building. So we believe that the full intent of the bylaw is met in this application. And I will have Ernie here, obviously, to talk about, because Ernie's involved with the adoption of the bylaw, and some of the conversation that went on about that at the time, and I can leave that to Ernie, and both, I apologize for having not introduced my clients. The applicant is, by statute, a nonprofit organization, and the parties who are responsible for that nonprofit organization are here tonight, and they can answer any specific questions that you might have, or any member of the board might have, relative to the actual process. I know that we have, we have two applications pending tonight, obviously, the one for the special permit, and Madam Chair, I don't know if you want to open that hearing and talk about everything collectively, or if you want to finish this one, and then go on to the next one. I leave that to your discretion. We are here to discuss both of them, obviously. I have additional information that will be submitted as part of the special permit application. But again, I think from your perspective, I'll let you make the call on that. We will adapt to whatever the chair and the board wishes in that regard.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, yes, Mr. Attorney Pettenari?
Madam Chair, I'm only here because I think I, I think I can lend some historical perspective to the question that's before the board. This bylaw's brand-new, everybody knows it. It was passed at the recent annual town meeting. When the bylaw was pending, when it was being developed, there were a couple of places in town that had a similar situation to what's before you. This is one, there was another one. Both of them had been brought to my attention. I had a series of conversations with the town council, with the town planner, with one of the members of the Board of Selectmen, and in all of those conversations, I indicated that I was concerned, because if the intent of the bylaw was to create some kind of a chilling effect on a marijuana, medical marijuana treatment facility, the 200-foot rule applied literally in these instances would be just that, it would create a chilling effect. And we were quite confident, and I was reasonably assured, that that was not the intent of the bylaw, but rather that that 200-foot rule would be viewed as a dimensional requirement, something that in the administration of your duties here, you could look at and see whether it pertained, and if it didn't, then you could vary it. The reason that's important, obviously, and we'll speak only about this one this evening, is that the involvement of the residential zone to this particular property is literally incidental. The residences are at the back end of the industrial park. They're on a street completely removed from the, from the industrial park, and as Joe indicates, more than three-quarters of a mile from the access point to the building. The intention that we had when we talked about the town meeting action was that we were going to go and propose that the 200-foot rule be looked at by town meeting, and maybe even amended if the case arose for circumstances like this. But assured that the bylaw's main thrust was to ensure that the location of an MMTC would only be in suitable industrially-zoned land, we were confident that if the situation arose, that someone expressed an interest in this parcel or one of the others, that it would be something we could come and talk to the board about. That's the only reason that I'm here, and I see Jerry's here tonight, and I'm sure he can shed any light on anything else that had happened. But one of the things that I think I want to make the point is that when the planning board looked at this, there was some debate about the efficacy of the 200-foot rule, and I think that's why the planning board didn't make a recommendation, one way or the other, on the application in itself. So that's all I had to say with respect to this, and if there are any questions about what went into the thought processes at the beginning, I'm here to answer those.
Okay. Attorney Moody, did you wish to make any comment, or?
No, Ernie's very accurate in what he said. This was discussed, and there were thoughts, so should it be 200, should it be eliminated? But in the end, timing was such that everybody just wanted to go forward at town meeting and get that done, and figured that, again, this specific issue was discussed, and they discussed the possibility that, if needed, relief could be sought here.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah.
Comments, questions?
Have you reached out at all to the, the one residential property that Abut's, have you reached out at all to the owner of the residential property that Abut's?
Personally, I have not, no. At this point, Attorney Fuck, we haven't reached out to anyone. We obviously made sure that Abut's notice got out, again, thinking that this was the public forum. I was going to make a comment that I'm, I'm, I'm actually quite impressed that people have looked at it this way, that they're not here tonight. I think that you would probably get a much larger crowd if we were seeking to add an industrial use there that required some kind of a noise variance or a light variance, which would be much more intrusive to the neighborhood. But, you know, I don't mean to give you a long answer. The answer is no, we haven't. We expected that if people came, we would be able to talk to them, and a lot of what I think is going to be important to the neighbors, we can talk about in the next hearing. I can, I can expand on it. I have a significant amount of information relative to how the property will be maintained, which I think is essential to the board's knowledge in this process, and I'll bring, I can submit it to you now, or bring it in, up in the next meeting, but why don't I give it to you? What I have done tonight, and asked to do, is I have provided a mission statement that my clients have relative to their application with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I have also imposed and attached the significant regulations that are imposed upon this particular use by the Department of Public Health. These are regulations that have been adopted and are now part of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulations, that set forth all of the criteria by which this building needs to be maintained, both on the outside and on the inside. And you will see as you look through this, and again, I know that that other hearing is not yet open, but I anticipated that what I'm submitting tonight would be incorporated as, if the board were favorable, you would incorporate these criteria into your special permit decision, so there'd be no question from a regulatory standpoint in the town of Milford what had to go on there. And you'll see as you go through those, there are significant types of surveillance, lighting, and documentation that must take place relative to each and every person entering that building, what each and every employee is required to do. There are core investigations of each employee, each employee must be badged. In fact, they are so extensive that there must be a alarm system in addition to the alarm system. And so they must have two alarm systems, one which is completely independent from the other. So let's just use Diebold as a company on one, and perhaps Comcast on the other, but they must be two separate alarm systems. And again, I think you'll see that this is a use, and I call it a pharmaceutical use, and I think I got picked because they knew I grew up in a pharmacy, and worked in it my whole life, and I have uncles and fathers and sisters, all of whom are pharmacists, so maybe that's why, and I worked in drugstores. I, I look at the regulations that are set forth relative to the dispense, this type of dispensary, and I look at the regulations that don't exist for pharmacies relative to dispensing medication. And I think that I can comfortably say that if I'm in this neighborhood, I'm not worried about someone taking the medication and driving by my house, because they can't. They cannot take it in the facility. Whereas if you walked into CVS and picked up your prescription, which could have significant effects on impairment, you could walk around the store, buy 10 other products, get a bottle of water, take your medication while you're there, and by the time you go out, that medication could be affecting your ability to drive. And those, there's no prohibition to where that kind of drug is dispensed. But we've done it here for the obvious reasons. This is something new, completely different here in Massachusetts, not different everywhere in the country. But I've reviewed the regulations, and I've compared them to other things, and I feel comfortable that, that to be here tonight, even though there are residences in the neighborhood, and I know that street very well, because as I said at the planning board, that's my cut-through way to avoid the traffic in Milford, because having grown up here, I know the way around. But it's, we all know Beaver Street's a hard street to drive on, very narrow and everything. But industrial drive, Commercial Way, and Bird Street are fairly significant roadways. But I think you'll see within there that this is a type of operation, a facility that is completely regulated, not just by the special permit that I hope you will grant, but also by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, who is going to overly regulate it because of the sensitive nature of this particular venture.
Anything else, Brian?
So this is, it's cultivation, processing, and dispensing?
That's correct.
From the same facility?
That's correct. There was a, there was a, there was a note in the plan that it might not have been used for dispensary. But frankly, I've talked to my clients about this, and if you're going to come to the town of Milford, and you're going to ask for some relief on the zoning bylaw, or zoning bylaw that's been carefully crafted, and the purpose of this is to provide medication for people in need, and we have a cancer facility in the town of Milford, we have the major hospital in this whole area is here in the town of Milford, why are you going to grow it here and dispense it someplace else? So they do intend to have a dispensary, which you'll also see in the regulations, is significantly regulated, okay? And I believe, when they first came in, they talked about using this facility simply for growing, but as they expanded and came to recognize, I think the importance to Milford in anything is, is that they will dispense here for the convenience of Milford residents. And again, these are all people who are going to receive medical certificates from licensed physicians. There must be a licensed physician who will grant a certificate. It'll be highly regulated from that point forward.
Anything else, Brian?
Not right now, no.
Joe?
Approximately, how far is it from the, that building to the residential section?
In driving distance, Mr. Evans, or in?
I know what you're saying, it's eight tenths of a mile.
Yeah, but it's, it's less than 200 feet.
Less, you have no idea, is it 150 feet?
I, I, I do. I apologize.
I have my Gary Harlan scale here. They don't show the residence right there, but let me just get the scale correctly. One inch equals four. One inch equals 40 feet. So I've got 40 feet to the property line. No, excuse me, I've got 60 feet to the property line, and I'm not certain how far back the residence is from there.
The residence structure is beyond 150 to 200 feet, but it's not the structure, Mr. Evans. It's the lot line.
There are residences in that area presently?
Yes, the Trot Line residence, you know where the Trot Line oil has been? There's a house there, and there's one across the street. There's two residences. This parcel directly across the street, Mr. Evans, is an office building, and in fact, there is a piece of property that's owned by someone else after our property line. Between our property line and Beaver Street, there's a strip of land that's actually owned by the piece across the street, for some odd reason. I think it had to do with the relocation of Beaver Street, and probably some issues with deeds. And then the Trot Line residence, where they've distributed oil for years, is here, and then there's a house across the street there. There's no other residences down this way.
And their access is out the other way?
Strictly on Beaver Street, and our access is strictly up this way, then down that way, and back that way. So as you know, you have to go circuitous all the way back. And again, you know, as I said before, the thing that's so unique about this is that we could have an industrial zone with residences that are a lot closer than eight tenths of a mile, that actually could be within 400 or 500 feet and be, have visual contact with the building, so you'd have frontage, frontage, frontage. But in this case, we don't have any common frontage of residential and industrial land.
Anything else, Joe?
Is there any possibility that there would be residences further than there are, I mean, closer than there are now?
No, this land, all inside here, Mr. Evans, from this line in here, where there is a residence, all of this is zoned industrial.
Uh-huh, okay.
Right? There's no other residential zoning. And again, and I think, again, when they drew the line, and I'm just guessing about how they do this, you had existing residences here and here, and you don't want to make them pre-existing non-conforming when they're residential, so you keep that residential zone.
You all set, Joe? Okay. John?
Attorney Antonellis, what type of barrier now presently exists between the property in question and the residential?
There's an existing fence that is in this area right here that I've highlighted. The existing fence is up and within this area, and we intend to make certain that the fence that eventually borders this property is a fence that is acceptable in site plan location, so we will do any of what we are asked. We have talked about whether or not it may be more advantageous to have chain link or to have some other kind of fence that's screened, something that has a residential look. My clients are open to any of those, because the other part of this is, we don't want to make it look like a fortress. I don't intend to have it be fortress in that regard, because all of the security that goes on is intense inside. The outside security is just simply to maintain the outside and to know who's out there and what's going on, for both the safety of the residents and for the people inside. And again, I think you have to look at this, that this is the same kind of security that one would find in a pharmaceutical manufacturing facility, where there were proprietary compounds being made. Nobody wants anybody knowing what they're doing there.
Just excuse me, Mrs.
I hope not like the one in Framingham.
That's correct. I hope not either.
To follow up on Mr. Dagnes's question, the terrain between Beaver Street and the building is very, very steep and very, very rough.
And it's wooded.
And it's heavily wooded, and it's very, very difficult to negotiate if someone were intent upon walking from the Beaver Street curb to the back of the building, even without the fences that Joe's talking about, it would be a very, very difficult traverse, even now.
Now, Attorney Ellis, Antonellis, I understand what you're saying about you don't want it to be fortress-like, but to me, in a wooded area where access to the grounds could be gained if they wanted to, I would think that would be an area where you actually, to me, you would have to increase your security.
I believe we are going to increase the security. My comment was only that we want to...
And because it's near a wooded area, not worrying about what it looks like.
We want to work with the planning board and with your board and that, and I want to point out to you, the issue about, you just talked about the wooded area, you will see in the package that I gave to you, that there is a provision within it that the property must be maintained, so that any wooded area is exposed, so that you can see who's in the tree. It literally says it in that package. So again, that's why I brought that package in, because people who have had experience with this in other states, and other, well, other states, not other communities here in Massachusetts, but other states have helped create those regulations. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the people involved in it did a lot of research on it. So we actually have a provision in there. And again, so I would tell you that the fence that goes up will be the fence that everybody believes is the safest one for both the residents and this building.
I mean, to me, Bob Wire isn't out of the question in an area like that. I mean...
Raise a what?
Raise a what. But again, I think that that has a visual connotation that we might not want also, so, I mean, meaning Milford by now.
Will that whole facility be used for cultivating?
Yes.
The entire facility will be utilized for cultivation?
There will be a portion of the front of the facility that will be used for the dispensary.
Correct.
But the rest of the building will be used for cultivation. One of the things that attracted my clients to this particular building is that there are no tenants in it, because if you bring in a building with multiple tenants and diverse uses, then you raise other security issue concerns. So they will have control of this entire building, they will be the only tenant, and there will be the dispensary in the front.
Now, if I may ask, what type of experience do the owners have in this area?
Well, I'm going to let them talk to you all about that themselves. So Mike, go ahead.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Michael Dundas. I represent Bay State Relief. Be happy to answer any of the questions that you have. Regarding your question about experience, we have engaged a member of a California legally-registered collective who has 10 years of experience cultivating medical marijuana in this very type of indoor facility. So he has worked with a variety of different growing techniques, and he is in the process right now of building out with our grow team, a growing and cultivation plan specific to this building. And you asked a moment ago about will all cultivation happen inside the building, and will the whole building be for cultivation? I'd just like to point out that the cultivation aspect is really, it's two, almost three aspects. Think of it sort of like wine. We're essentially growing the grapes, we're also processing the grapes, and then we're packaging the grapes, all in one place. So we will have a separate piece of the facility for growing the plants, a smaller piece of the facility for processing the grown plants when they're cut, and then a final piece of the facility for packaging those plants for distribution in the dispensary in the front of the building.
Well, I think that, I think this whole process is basically relatively new to everybody. And again, I can only speak from what I've seen on television, where I've seen the distribution centers in Colorado, where, you know, people go in and they pick what type of marijuana they want, and it always struck me funny that the person working the front of the store, at times, I mean, looked like no more than a teenager with a T-shirt on, and my idea of this operation would be more along the pharmaceutical lines, where you have white guard people distributing the product.
If I could, yes, address that issue precisely, because, you know, in other states, marijuana's been legal in California since 1996, it's been legal in other states for several years. Here in Massachusetts, the Department of Public Health has chosen to go, the Department of Public Health in Massachusetts has chosen to go a very different route, to more, much more tightly regulate this industry than it is in California, Colorado, or Washington. If there was a state that you could look to that has similar regulations as we are coming forth with here in Massachusetts, it would probably be Maine. Maine has had a medical marijuana program now for two years. They have a similar type of regulatory regime there, where the Department of Health and Human Services in Maine grants permission and licenses to both cultivators and to patients, which is what we're going to have here, and they also take a much more medicalized approach. In Massachusetts, they take an even more medicalized, sort of pharmacy-like approach, and that's exactly the approach that we plan to take. So when you see these reports on TV, as we've all seen, 60 Minutes has done a bunch of pieces, CNN's had a bunch of pieces on the Colorado dispensaries, it's true. You see people that look sort of like the counterculture vision of what marijuana might appear to us in our minds. In Massachusetts, it's going to be a very different situation across the board, and it's certainly, I can tell you from our company's perspective, it's going to be a very different experience for us as well. If you take a look at the package that we laid out, we gave you a very brief cover page of what we plan to do. It's a very general overview, but some of the other details are that on our board of directors, we have a significant number of medical professionals who are overseeing our operations, and I think we will plan to have something along the lines of the white suit, medical professional-type dispensary staff as well.
Is there any present requirements that any type of registered pharmacist be on the premises or anything?
We don't have a requirement in the Massachusetts regulations for a registered pharmacist to be on staff. However, we do have a registered pharmacist on our board of directors that's giving us advice in best practices for regulated dispensing in Massachusetts of other types of drugs. Another way to approach that issue is to note that in the regulations, in order for a patient to be qualified to get medical marijuana, they must first see a licensed Massachusetts physician. That physician must give them a recommendation to use marijuana. They must then take that recommendation down to the Department of Public Health and register themselves with a Department of Public Health database. And in fact, we are required to maintain a, an inventory tracking and control system in our facility, as are all of the registered medical marijuana dispensaries in Massachusetts, that will interface with the DPH database, so that when a registered patient comes to our facility, they will have to slide their ID card through our, through our card reader before they're ever allowed access even to our facility in the first place. And that means that they'll have to have a check from DPH, will have to get an electronic signal back from DPH to authorize them even to enter the facility.
So excuse my ignorance on this, but basically, a patient doesn't, doesn't come with a prescription from a physician. They just come with a note, more or less?
Well, it's, they, in Massachusetts, we're calling it a certification.
In other words, a physician doesn't prescribe a certain amount for a patient?
There is, there is an amount requirement. In fact, there is a limitation on the amount that any given patient is allowed to have in a certain timeframe. A physician must prescribe, they don't call it a prescription, they call it a certification, a doctor will certify a patient for a certain amount over a certain time period. And as a patient comes to our or another facility, that amount, they have a card, ID card, with a magnetic stripe on it, which will contain all of their biographic information, as well as the amount of marijuana that they're allowed to have from their doctor's certification. As they purchase marijuana, we will also be scanning that card, logging it onto that magnetic strip, and so that the next time that they come, they will not be able to gain access to more than they are allowed to have from their doctor.
So obviously, all entrance into the building will be done by pass key or whatever?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mike?
I'm sure the state of Massachusetts has given you guys a boatload of regulations.
We just gave you 11 short pages.
I went through other pages already. My concerns are with the, with the lighting and security, number one. That's my main concern. I've already been up there. And access from Beaver Street into this place, unless you want to get a lot of thorns to the side and everything else, is going to be difficult. Whatever type fence you put up, I'm sure it'll work. Lighting in the back, what is it currently? Do you know?
I actually don't know what the current lighting is, but for us, we are required to have a certain amount of lighting per the regulations. So we've engaged with a third-party professional security firm to design our security plan. They've looked at plans for this building in particular, and they will customize that plan to this building, and there will certainly be an adequate amount of light during our operations, once we begin operations in the building.
Are those lights, will they be, they're not going to be flashing into the residents that are 200 feet away? They're going to be more...
They're not.
Straight-down type surveillance lighting?
That is correct.
I don't mean to eject, but there are also motion detectors involved in this process relative to the security, so that if there's any movement outside, it immediately sends a signal into the building first and foremost, and there'll always be security people inside. All of this has been coordinated monitoring, so that one monitor sets off another, so on and so forth.
So putting aside, there won't be any problems or interference with the lives of the neighbors, et cetera, sort of putting it that way. Let's go back into the security issue. I noticed that you have, you have two areas, one dispensing, one's cultivating. If somebody does gain access to the dispensing, can they also gain access to the cultivating?
No, they cannot. And so DPH has been very clear about this, we're very clear about this in our own internal controls, that there is a very specifically delineated "public," quote-unquote "public" section. I put quotes around that because only qualifying patients are allowed in there, not general members of the public. But even in that, inside the RMD, the qualifying patients will only be allowed in our public area of the RMD.
Allowed there, but can they access the cultivating area?
There will be access doors, probably, to the cultivating area for our dispensary staff, and, but they will not, patients will never be allowed behind the cultivation, I'm sorry, the dispensary counter.
Again, I'm playing devil's advocate on the security issues.
Sure.
I know it's .8 miles to get there. I've driven. I'm more concerned about the police, it's also, they're going to have the same problem getting up there. It's a tough, tough place to, to react to. You said you're going to have security personnel on site?
That's correct.
Are they going to be armed?
That, we are looking to advisors from the town of Milford. So we've engaged the police department in Milford, we've talked to Chief O'Laughlin, and we're continuing to engage him and his department in figuring out answers to questions just like that. We'd like to talk to them first before we make a final determination on that and follow their guidance.
So your security personnel will obviously be there during operating hours?
Correct.
Or at most throughout the evening on 24-hour basis?
That we may in fact have 24-hour security personnel on the premises. That's another determination that will be made in conjunction with the Milford Police Department.
On the premises, monitoring all outside cameras, et cetera?
Correct.
Will they be doing an occasional outside check?
Again, this is something that we are paying close attention to. Those details have not yet been determined, and we will determine them as well in coordination with the Milford Police Department.
That's the best way, because my thing would be, if somebody's leaving that building to check outside?
Absolutely.
There's where your issue comes going back in. I guess that's pretty, oh, one poor thing, transportation. I noticed you have to have at least two agents transporting.
That's correct.
One's got to be in a vehicle with the product at all given times?
That's correct.
And one's going to be delivering, I would assume.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Again, in that situation, will these individuals be armed?
I don't, you know, there has not...
It's kind of scary if they are.
It is, it is. And so that's, that's not a requirement of the rules. We do have extensive guidance on how our transportation is to be documented, that, like you say, the number of people in the car, you know, the manifests that are required to be carried by the drivers, the delivery drivers, contain all of the information about the products that they're carrying, even down to the route that they're taking. And so when they travel between the dispensary and any given delivery point, every single delivery has a manifest with a given route on it, and they're going to follow that route exactly. Now, to the question, will they be armed? That's another question.
That's just a question that should be taken up with the police, I would assume also. However, I guess in this case, if you get two individuals transporting, one's doing this, one's doing that, what is the largest quantities? Is there a limit per the state rules that you have a quantity maximum you can deliver?
You know, the state has not given us a maximum quantity limit for delivery, but I think they will be taking into account in our delivery plan whether or not we would allow for a maximum quantity that might exceed safety limits. And so we'll be looking at that very closely. We haven't made that determination yet, but we will be looking at that very closely, and we want to stay certainly well under anything that would be considered a safety risk.
I'm looking to get, give you the opportunities.
Absolutely. I would also note that all the cars, you know, the vehicles that we have will all be unmarked, they will not be driving at designated times repetitively, day by day by day, that will mix up the routes, that kind of thing. So we're going to take all appropriate precautions for that.
If somebody really wanted it, they would know where you were going, when you were going.
That's unfortunately probably true.
But again, if you have such a small quantity you're delivering, it's not worth it.
That's probably right, yes.
That's exactly what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
And I'm sure the state must have something in there somewhere. Or they will.
If they don't now, they will. Yeah.
I guess that's it, just as far as, as far as there's no neighbors complaining about it, and the lighting's going to be sufficient to handle our surveillance cameras and motion detectors. Oh, I noticed you have a five-minute second backup on the security?
That's correct.
So you have panic alarm?
We do.
In the front and the back?
Absolutely.
And they're both hooked into the same five-minute interval? If A doesn't work, B will work?
I, you know what, I can't answer that question conclusively. I don't know yet, but I can get an answer back to you.
My understanding from the reading of the regulations is it has to be a backup to every one of your security.
There's certainly, we certainly have to have a backup for the alarm.
Within a five-minute...
Within the five-minute window? I can't, I don't have that detail, but I can certainly find out for you.
But that would work on A and B, dispensary and cultivation? But that would work on A and B, dispensary and cultivation areas?
Yes.
One last question, and this is probably a little foolish, because I seen the building, it's mostly glass in the front and it's, and you're right, it is the perfect facility for what you want to do. And location. As far as the glass in front and everything else, and again, I'm not talking about somebody who's trying to make a million dollars off hitting this place. I'm only talking about somebody who's just out there. They could easily put rocks to those windows or any other thing they want to do.
Sure.
Again, panic alarm comes in, but can't get into the dispenser, I mean, to the cultivation area?
Absolutely not. The cultivation area will be extremely tightly sealed from a security perspective.
So basically, all they can do is scream from the dispensary area that I want to get into the cultivation area?
Yeah, with luck, we'll be, we might even be replacing the glass, the existing glass that's there now. We've got, as I said, third-party securities firm that has looked at this, and they're, they're continuing to come out to the site and do surveys, they will give us the design of the security up to and beyond what the state requires. So it's very possible that we'd end up replacing the glass that's in there at the moment.
I just bring these points up because, like I said, the police response, unless they're in that area, will be, will be tough. And that hard road's to navigate going up there. And B, if you have armed guards, that's a whole different situation also. Chances are, you probably won't have armed guards, maybe Taser loaded, but other than that, those are, my only concerns are security.
I just have one question for you. How many employees are you scheduled to have?
We're looking at about 15 to 25 employees. It's unclear. There could be an expansion of employees, maybe six months to a year, once our operations begin.
Okay, what were the hours of operation, just, was this a seven days a week, or?
We'd like to operate probably seven days a week, normal business hours, but we are also open to suggestion on that front, if any of you have any objections to anything like that.
This being a relatively new business that's come to Massachusetts, knowing the scale of that building, what do you project this to be? One of the larger ones in Massachusetts? Or maybe the largest?
I wouldn't say that it would be the largest.
Pretty big though.
It's very difficult to gauge the competition out there. Everyone's holding their cards pretty close to the vest. But when we've looked around at a variety of different properties where landlords have also seen other people looking for this use, it's about average, to be perfectly honest. It's certainly not on the, on the large, on the larger side. Usually 20, 25, 30,000, we've seen 35,000, we've seen 40,000. There's one property that we saw that was 15,000, but that was really in the minority. And so this looks to me to be right about average of what people are looking for.
Okay, anyone else on the board have any questions? Brian?
I know patients aren't allowed to use the fire on site, the processing. Is this going to result in odors and whatnot in, in the area?
No. All of the cultivation facility on the inside is going to be a completely closed-loop system from an HVAC perspective. All the external air that goes out is fully filtered, so there will be no odor to the area.
Anyone else? No one in the audience I see is here to speak, so Attorney Antonellis will give you your last word before I close.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think we vetted the issue very, very, very thoroughly, and the only thing I would say is that the, I delivered prescriptions my whole life. When I was 16, I started on those dark roads in Holliston, and I'm now nervous about what might happen when I hear all this, but, because who knows? But I appreciate the board, I think, very thorough examination on the board's part, and I think we're pleased with the presentation we made. We thank you for the opportunity, and hope that your vote is favorable.
Okay, so we'll close the hearing, and I believe we need to vote on this to go on.
Well, you certainly need to.
We should vote on it.
Decide on the variance before you make a decision.
Yeah, before we go to the next.
You could hear that, I mean, you could make a decision, I'm not discouraging that, or you could hear them both, take them both under advisement, but you still would have to make that variance decision.
Yeah, I just assumed, I just assumed that we make a decision on this and then move on to the next one. So as far as the decision to grant them a variance, anyone have any comments or anything additional to say? Any feelings? Okay. Having heard none, I'd like to take a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
All right.
So now, Madam Chair, you can open the next hearing.
I'm going to read more.
I'm going to say ditto.
Okay, we, now it being after 7:15, on the application of Bay State Relief, Inc. of 435 Worcester Road, Framingham, Mass. for a special permit pursuant to Section 2.3 of the zoning bylaw, in order to establish a medical marijuana treatment center on 4.553 acre, more or less parcel of land located at the end of Commercial Way, known in number 13 Commercial Way, Milford, Mass. Oh. Okay, on the application, pursuant to what provisions of the zoning bylaw do you speak, seek a special permit, and for what purposes? 2.3 medical marijuana, Section 2.3, Medical Marijuana Treatment Center of the zoning bylaw. Explain the reasons why you assert that. See attached. Question 11A, the special permit sought is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. The bylaw provision for a medical marijuana treatment center address the suicidal interest in making medical marijuana available to the residents of Milford. This special permit is sought to effectuate the suicidal interest expressed by the town meeting and to provide safe access to this medicine. Question 11B, the proposed use of the premises will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. The bylaw provides for the MMTCs to be located in an industrial zone IBIC on the theory that MMTCs should be in an area with ample infrastructure. The proposed premise is located in an industrial zone 1B at the end of Commercial Way is located in just such an area. There is virtually no private auto or pedestrian traffic in the area, and the roadways are designed for large commercial vehicles. Question 11C, the proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. The proposed location situated approximately 4,480 feet, .85 miles if driven on roadways from the nearest residence on Beaver Street. Moreover, use of the premises will be entirely internal. No loitering will be permitted. Additionally, the premises will be strictly secured. And now we have a planning board. At the planning board meeting on, let's see here, oh, this, Dear Board Members, the Planning Board reviewed the petition listed above at the regularly scheduled meeting of October 1st, 2013, and recommends the following. Two in favor, two opposed, one abstained. Letter from Larry Duncan. Dear Mr. Chairman, the applicant's request a variance in special permit to establish a medical marijuana treatment center on the subject property. The proposal is to occupy the existing building with internal alterations only. The only external alteration would be the addition of security fencing. The applicant is seeking a variance from the entire 200-foot separation requirement from the residential zones and dwellings. New provisions for MMTCs, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, see attached, were recently adopted at the May 20th, 2013 annual town meeting by a 114 to 21, 84.4% favorable vote. The primary protection established by the new provisions beyond the general special permit criteria is a separation requirement added in a new footnote, number 23, in Section 2.3, use regulation schedule as follows. 23, no medical marijuana treatment center shall be located within 200 feet of a residential zone, dwelling unit, school, place of worship, church, park, playground, or youth center. Measurements to determine the 200-foot separation shall be taken from the property lines. Where any portion of the lot is within a required separation, the entire lot shall be considered to be within the required separation. Eliminating that separation entirely seems contradictory to the presumed intent of the town meeting just four months ago in establishing the 200-foot separation and the method of measurement, which specifically excludes the securitous route method the applicant is utilizing. Therefore, I recommend an unfavorable recommendation be forwarded to the zoning board of appeals. Okay, and on that, the floor is yours again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Joseph Antonellis on behalf of the applicant, and again, Ernie Pettenari here with me on behalf of the owner of the property. The board has already granted favorable relief on our variance request, and I believe that we, in that discussion, we basically vetted out most of the issues that would relate to the special permit process. And I don't mean to be redundant on a busy night, but I think that the board is now comfortable with having the information relative to how this process actually takes place. I added a handout during the prior hearing that I would ask that you incorporate into this particular hearing, into the special permit hearing, and I would encourage you to review that in, when you're in your deliberations, to see if there are any additional specific considerations or limitations you'd like to place on the special permit. We feel very comfortable that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, in enumerating those regulations, has given you guidance and given you a backdrop by which for you to grant the special permit. Again, we feel very strongly about the application. We, we see this as a burgeoning pharmaceutical use, something that has been extremely well researched in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, perhaps, perhaps the most advanced area in the country in medical research. So here we are, sitting in the bastion of medical research, in not just the United States, but perhaps the entire world, and the legislature and the people of the Commonwealth have made a statement that this particular pharmaceutical use is something that should be available to its residents. We believe that the petition that we have in front of you complies with all of those regulations and would seek, again, favorable review on the special permit. And again, my clients are here, this is, again, I just to reiterate, this is a nonprofit organization. This is an organization that is going to be highly regulated as it relates to the production and distribution of a pharmaceutical product, and in addition, this is a industry that is going to be regulated as to how much profit it can make. So to the extent that my client's business is successful, it can only be successful within the guidelines of a nonprofit organization. It is not going to be a stock corporation, people can't invest in it. It is not going to make dividends or distributions to people. It can't give outlandish bonuses or provide perks to my clients in a way that a regular corporation could, because again, under the state statute, it must be a nonprofit organization. To the extent that the profits or the production of this particular facility exceed expectations, then the additional funds that will be available to my clients must be distributed to a like-kind need, specifically to counseling, drug addiction programs, programs with medical, for indigent people with medical needs, and also for finding alternative medicines for people. So I think that's important in the backdrop of what you look, we didn't talk about it in the last petition, because that was more related to the dimensional issues, but as you look at this particular industry, we'll talk again just about the fact that it is nonprofit, so that there is a, a sense of utilitarianism and holistic approach by, by my clients to provide this service, and I would ask that you, that you take note of that and understand from my counsel and from Mr. Pettenari's counsel, that they recognize that the first point of charity, if it is required under their charter, is here in the town of Milford, a town that has needs for, for a variety of people. If there are any other specific questions about the process, again, we're more than happy to answer them, but I did want to make the comment about the nonprofit status of the organization, which we didn't talk about the last time, but that is true of this particular client and any other applicant that happens to come before your board, must fit within those very, very defined guidelines in a highly, highly regulated industry.
Okay. Anyone here in the audience to speak on this? Okay. We'll start with you, Mark. Any, any other questions, comments?
No, I think we've covered it pretty well.
Okay. John?
No.
Brian?
You mentioned earlier that it's helpful that there are not, no other existing tenants on the property. Do the regulations prohibit any other uses on the property beyond yours?
No, they, they, they don't prohibit any other uses on, in the specific regulations, but they complicate it as it relates to the security issues, because then you have to have additional security issues on the petitions between the two uses. That again is one of the reasons my client picked this building.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay, Joe? Okay. And I don't, either, I think we've.
Well, thank, again, we thank the board for the opportunity. Again, a very thorough hearing. Appreciate the, the good listening on, on your part. We hope you listened well on this part, and I thank Madam Chairman for the manner in which the meeting was conducted, with the two meetings together. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. We'll close the meeting, and we'll take it under advisement. You know what, why don't we, since we're here, why don't we just vote on this now, just to get it over with, and then, because I'll be, I won't be chairing the next meeting. So as it's presented, anyone have any, any additions, comments, or are we all set with the way it's presented? I mean, the regulations, to me, seem to be pretty much in place, even you brought up a lot of good points about the security, and I think that, I think that from what I'm reading from this, just perusing this quickly, it's, I mean, it's, I think they've covered all their bases. Brian or Joe, anything?
I think, I think, I think we should maybe impose some conditions on the.
Okay, and what would you like?
Special perm is the use. It's currently that they don't have access from Beaver Street. I think that should be a condition, that they can't access the site from Beaver Street, access only from Commercial Way.
When you say no access from Beaver Street?
Access to the site, direct access to the site.
Oh. Okay, so, so the route they can take, they can't use Beaver Street?
They can use Beaver Street, you can't directly access the site from Beaver Street.
Oh, okay, all right.
I think the applicant was.
So no access to site from Beaver Street? Okay, any other conditions?
I got a couple of them.
Okay.
Compliance with all laws of the Commonwealth and the town of Milford with respect to the use.
Okay.
Runs with the applicant.
Okay.
Proper ventilation to prevent the release of odors off the property.
Okay, but wasn't that already stated they had to do that anyway?
I know, but this would be a condition of the special permit.
Okay, so you want proper ventilation? So as to eliminate any odor?
From leaving the property.
Okay.
And then no other uses allowed on the property.
Okay, anyone else have any, anyone else have any problem with any of these conditions? Which will be no access to the site from Beaver Street, compliant with all laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and town of Milford, runs with the applicant, proper ventilation so as to eliminate any odor from leaving the property, and no other uses allowed on the property. Is that, is everyone happy with that? Okay, and I'll take a vote, all in favor? Anyone opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you again.
You're very welcome. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
I think that especially no other business in the property keeps it simple. Anyone have any conflicts on this next hearing? Hearing not, this will be myself, Mary, Joe, John, and I believe this time it's Mark's turn, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, Mark's turn? You've got the attendance sheet out? Okay, that being after 7:20, this is on the application of AFCO Land and Development Corporation of 189 Main Street, Milford, Mass. Excuse me. Seeking approval to change a project. Seeking approval to change a project previously approved under the application for the comprehensive permit of general laws, Chapter 40B, commonly known as Beaver Pond Commons, on land located on the easterly side of Beaver Street, consisting of approximately 1,74,567 square feet. The subject applicant is pursuant to 760 CMR 56-0511. The prior comprehensive permit was approved under decision February 10th, '05, and the proposed changes would reduce the number of units from 88 total units to 73 units, consisting of 18 affordables and 55 market units, with the number of bedrooms remaining at 176. Course copies of the petitions and the diagrams and proposals are all related and filed with the town clerk and are available at any point in time for public inspection. Now, on the application... We can dispense... You want to make a motion to dispense with it?
Yeah, I can make a motion to dispense with the reading if it's exactly as...
As it appears? Is it exactly as it appears on the applications? Is that...
I'm sorry?
Dispense with the reading?
Yes.
If it's exactly as it is on the application?
Anyone have any problem with that?
If not, I'll take a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Brian? Yeah? You're off. Okay, thank you. I will put into the record a letter from the planning board. Planning board reviewed the petition of the scheduled meeting of October 1st and recommends the following. Favorable recommendations, see town plan a letter. Town plan a letter indicates the applicant requests a modification of the above-capping comprehensive permit to change the number of total units previously approved by the ZBA on 210, '05 for the subject property. The proposal is to reduce the overall number of units from 88 to 73 and reduce the number of affordable units from 22 to 18. The total number of bedrooms will remain the same at 176, with some units to now be three-bedroom units instead of two. The proposed modifications will not substantially alter grading, the location of the roadways, utilities, or the general placement of the buildings. In addition, reducing the number of units, the total lot coverage for imperious services will be reduced by 23% to 21%, and 43 of the buildings will now be single-family detached units. Therefore, I recommend a favorable recommendation be forwarded on to the zoning board of appeals. With that, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board. My name is Suzette Ferrera. I represent the applicant, AFCO Land Development Corp. With me tonight is Domingos Afonso and Tina Afonso, both from AFCO. If you recall, I was here last month and gave you a brief highlight of what we were trying to do, and Mr. Chairman has pretty much given us a highlight. But, again, my client received a comprehensive permit back in 2005. Since that time, he did start building up on Beaver Street, and if any of you are familiar, there are two fourplex units up there. What we didn't anticipate when we first started this project was some of the issues that we would have with financing the market units. And one of the requirements is that 50% of the units either need to be sold or under deposit in order to get financing. What we had to do up there with those two buildings, there's a total of eight units. We ended up moving two of the affordable units into the same building, and then we did have one cash buyer for one of the units. We still weren't able to sell the other units, and we have five out of eight units rented. So what we are proposing to do in order to make this a more viable type of project is we're trying to introduce single families into the mix, because what happens with the financing for the single-family unit is that it's looked at as an individual unit. So you don't have to worry about anything else being under agreement or sold. So people would be able to get financing for those individual units. How else that would be able to help us is that those individual, single-family units would then also be used towards the whole. So now, if we start building on the main way there, those single families, and we sell three or four of them, now those three or four get added to the eight that are already there, and say, out of 12 units, now we have seven that are sold. So now, that would also help sell the five that are within those other two fourplex buildings. So by doing that, what we're proposing is introducing 41 single-family units. We will have the two fourplex units, and then there's also 12 duplexes that are scattered within the development as well. Before, we had no single families, and the project was made up all of fourplexes, triplexes, and duplexes. So by doing this, we are reducing the total number of units from 88 to 73. We're reducing the number of affordable units from 22 to 18, and the number of market units from 66 to 55... I'm sorry, to 50, yes. 55, 55 market. We're also not looking to change the number of bedrooms, because by introducing some of these single-family units, some of the single-family units will have three bedrooms. There are 30 out of the 41 that we're proposing to have three bedrooms. The other 11 single families would have two bedrooms and then an office or something like that, and I did provide copies of some of those plans to the board members so that you could take a look and see what those look like. I can also have Bob kind of get up and explain the differences with the layout of the development with this change and describe some of those changes as well.
So you see here, this plan that you see here is the originally approved comprehensive permit is on. We had the eight units here off of Beaver Street with a separate access. We had eight units here off of Beaver Street with a separate access. I was going to do that, too. And we have basically two accesses into the site, the main road, Beaver Pond Road, and then a small secondary road here called Dino's Way. So as you see, we had quads, triplexes, duplexes, triplexes along a bump out over in here, wetlands is all here. This is the pond. Wetlands along in here. This is the darker green is what is left undisturbed. The rest has been already cleared. It's been cleared for some time. So the proposal then goes, switches to this. As you can see, these units are already constructed, so this has its own access once again. The access in the roadway stays the same here, but instead of two fourplexes, we have four duplexes here. All the roadway infrastructure and roadway layout stays exactly the same as it was on the previously approved plan. The drainage all stay the same, even though we reduced the amount of impervious within roadway. We've eliminated all this road up in here and all these driveways and all these additional driveways for the 15 units that we reduced it. We have not reduced the size of the detention basin or changed any of the piping design within the roadway, because it's... A lot of it is already in, and the detention basins are already constructed. So what we feel here is this is, by reducing it by 15 units and making more singles, which we know from the project up on Zane Ridge, that it's something that people like to buy a single-family condos, is a viable marketing tool to provide somewhat like, you know, people get a single-family living, but in a condominium-type development. So no change by keeping, by trying to keep the number of bedrooms at the same number. There's no change in the sewer flows, the pump station that's already been designed and been purchased and is partially installed. So really, other than the building layout and the type of building, there's real no change to the designer, engineering aspects of the development at all.
Okay, thank you. Anybody in the audience like to be heard on this application? Yes, sir. Please state your name for the bid.
For the record, my name is Mike Biscarp. I never said it, Mary.
Mike, if you want to shoot up to the board so the public can see you?
Thank you.
Just some notes I have, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Back in '05, when this original application came before the board, one of the most convincing arguments stated by the applicant for approving this application was that the units would be limited to two-bedroom units versus three-bedroom units. Now, there is a distinct difference between two-bedroom units versus three-bedroom units. Please do not be misled by the applicant stating that the number of, the total number of bedrooms will be the same. The total number of bedrooms in and of itself is insignificant in terms of deciding whether or not to approve this application. Two-bedroom units versus three-bedroom units is really what's in question here. If we can reduce this down to maybe more understandable terms, think of it in terms of three two-bedroom units as opposed to two three-bedroom units. Back in '05, there were several hours of discussion regarding the number of bedrooms. And once again, this, the number of bedrooms per unit was a distinct argument made by the applicant in order for the board to approve this application. The number of, I'm sorry, the financial feasibility of this project for the developer should not be considered in any way. It was common, back in '05, it was common knowledge, even to the most uninformed onlooker, as to what the requirements for financing would be. It was clearly available to anybody, so that should not be considered in your discussions. I would respectfully submit to you, Mr. Chairman, that your board has only one reasonable alternative, and that is to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else care to be heard in the public? If not, I'll turn it over to board members. Brian, I'll start with you.
I have nothing to say.
Joe?
Now, the single-family units are detached units, correct?
Yes, correct.
All right, yeah. No, another question.
Mary?
No, so these are, these are single-family condo units?
Yes, correct. Yes.
All right.
So that was 41 single-family, 12 duplexes?
And two fourplexes, the two that are already up there, for a total of 55 total buildings.
I think there's 14 duplexes. I think there's 13 duplexes.
Oh, there is. I thought it was 41.
There's 41, and then...
12 duplexes, I thought.
41 singles, and then eight more is 49, and we've got to get up to 73, so it'll be 14.
14.
14, I believe.
14?
Is it?
It's 55 total buildings, correct?
Correct.
So we have two fourplexes.
41 and 9.
41 and 12 duplexes is 55, right? That's actually wrong. 41 single families plus two fourplexes is 43, plus 12 duplexes is a 55.
Oh, 55, that's correct. 55 buildings, yes.
So there's 12 duplexes.
Yes.
Any other comments, Joe? Mark?
I actually like this new plan. I like it, looks good. I don't have a lot of hate views at all.
Out of the, how many three bedrooms, you said?
30.
30. Out of those 30, any of those duplexes, three-bedroom duplexes?
No. All the three bedrooms are in the single families only. So our plans for the duplexes have remained the same, which are only two bedrooms.
Okay. I'm going to ask a question if we could, would you consider modifying some of those threes to, you know, maybe reducing those threes by 10 to twos? Would you consider something like that? So instead of 30, there would be 20? It's a question, if you would consider something along that line. I get the challenge of the threes, and there's a lot of success from history on these, that the twos are clearly more saleable for the neighborhood, especially when people are downsizing. And I'm only making this comment out of past experience of the project that, of course, Zane Ridge has encompassed, and most of the people that we've seen are actually coming from the big colonials and downsizing. Their preference was to try and not get in a community that had a lot of three bedrooms. That was an awful lot of feedback, and if there were, they were not interested in trying to go down that road. So I'm just throwing that out there as a considerational aspect, simply because they will, it will bring additional family, but if this format seems to be the new format, that, you know, everything starts on the West Coast and swings to the East Coast, and this format has now come from the West Coast and is being very successful. I understand that the aspect of the financing, because clearly that was real, the guidelines changed since '05, financing for these things were a nightmare, and I clearly got the challenge, irregardless of some of the statements that someone made from the public, that I clearly have firsthand knowledge that the first phase of this, or the original approved phase of this, clearly had some financing challenges, and that's the reason and the problem you have, which you had. And thus, why this modification is in play. Frankly, this modification is a much more attractive modification. I think it's much of a classier subdivision process, and I think you'll find that your buyers that you get here or your future buyers could very well be, you know, the, you know, the double-income-no-kids syndrome. So thus, my question concerning the three bedrooms. That is my comment. I think you've done a wonderful job redesigning this to benefit within the community, and I clearly like it much better than what was, I wasn't on the board before when this was originally approved. I just have a couple of questions on some of the plans, because I'm assuming that the plans that are being, that are in here are basically what you intend to build?
Right. Those are proposed plans. We don't have, we don't have full sets for those three bedrooms, because obviously, we're not approved yet, so, you know, why get them fully done? So those are just proposals that our architect gave us. And if you notice, a lot of those, actually, all the three bedrooms actually show the master bedroom on the first floor...
Correct.
Which also, we think, for this type of development, would be something that certain buyers are looking for, for that first-floor bedroom, and that's why we did that with these single-family homes, because we do think, you know, there is a consumer out there for this type of home. With respect to your question as to whether or not we would consider reducing the number of single families from 33 bedrooms to 23 bedrooms, you know, based on the demographics of the type of buyers that we might have for that project, it's almost as though if you have a three-bedroom option there on a single family, they have the option of either having it, of turning it into an office themselves and not using it as a third bedroom, or if the need is there for the third bedroom, they have that as an option. I haven't discussed whether or not my client would be willing to reduce it, but I'm not sure that that is even, you know, a big change. We're talking about reducing it, you know, 10 bedrooms.
One of the things, my name is Dominique Afonso. We think probably with the master bedroom downstairs, you think to attract more older people, because when you get old, you like, you don't like climbing stairs. And that means, because there are two rooms upstairs, that means you don't want to have no kids. You try to attract, have the master bedroom downstairs to attract more older people. All the people, like, I'm getting old, too. I like finding myself climbing stairs. I'm getting there.
I don't think your wife will agree with you.
And I think this way, have an extra bedroom or don't have, that's we try to attract more older people, because all the people, you don't want to categorize, certain age you don't want to categorize, you don't do this, you know. But also, if we have some people, some friends coming up from someplace else, you like to have a place to stay, what does you could say is a bedroom? Start saying, you know, go to office or something. But again, that's up to the board. It's not like we try to attract more older people. We don't think we're going to attract a lot of kids, because that way, we don't have the bedroom downstairs. The parents, they don't like to leave the kids alone upstairs. Certain things like, you know, that's why the master bedroom downstairs makes a lot of... It's all... the bedroom downstairs. The parents, they don't like to leave the kids alone upstairs. Certain things like, you know, that's why the bed, master bedroom downstairs makes a lot of, that's how I think the people, the, they, they like the most. I don't say people have one kid, but I don't see a big thing with kids, because all, even if you have work people, and I see myself, and I had two kids, work people, the most you could have at two kids, and some they don't have any. I know you're talking about kids, but some they might even have empty schools, because the working people, they don't have most time for kids, and all, you know, the schedules are very tough. I know it's, that's the way I think, but again, we all different opinions. I don't see a big deal. If you have to come down, to me, it's just say a bedroom or it's office, it's one or the other, but still the same, just don't put a closet. But that's the boardy feels, whatever the board feels, I like, like be work with them.
Okay, great. For the benefit of the public, just so that the public are aware, these single-family detached-style condos, range in size, based on the plan from the two bedrooms to the threes to the duplexes, seem to be between 1,800 and upwards of 22 or 2,300 square feet, depending on style, design, and bedrooms, just as an information standpoint. Also additionally, I just want to read into the record real quickly before I turn it over with any other questions, is the water company has also commented with a letter, and so has in the Milford Fire Department. Both departments have reviewed the proposed changes, and there are no objections, no objections whatsoever, or concerns or issues on any of the changes submitted. So, I wanted to read that into the record as well. If any of the other board members have any comments or questions, now's the time.
I just have one. If you did consider redoing the three-bedroom to two-bedroom, would that change the square footage at that particular minute? Just a bigger bedroom. That's it.
Okay. With no other comments or questions, Joe? You're all set? Have your last word before you close the hearing, take it under advisement.
Thank you. Members of the board, I would just ask that you consider our proposal and, and vote to approve our change.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For closing the hearing. Why don't we, first of all, just go back to Star Rental, this is, this will probably be a quickie. Any comments from the board besides the normal, which will, which will...
Run with the applicant.
The permit will run with the applicant?
I'm okay.
For six cars? Any other comments?
I'm inside on that one.
Okay, of course, it's going to be subject to site plan review anyway, so that's a standard condition that they've got to meet. All those in favor, say in a voice, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
You're welcome.
Okay, is that Beaver Pond? Okay. Okay, concerning the revision to Beaver Pond subdivision, AFCO Land Development, any comments?
No, I just like what Mark said. I like the layout, looks better. Cleaner and...
Anybody else? Brian?
I'm fine with it.
Joe? Not? All those in favor, say in a voice, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much.
I got to sign that plan, though.
Yes.
This one here. Did you have to sign any? You didn't have to sign any plan on your side?
I did, I already took.
With that being said, I will take a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mary, seconded by John. All those in favor, opposed?
Okay, meeting's adjourned.
Unanimous. Thank you for joining us. Good night, everyone.
Does anybody have an action?